Welcome everyone to the city council meeting for November 28th. If we could have a roll call to call of order, please ma'am.
Ricky Snyder?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
There.
David Mitchell?
Here.
Terry McClung?
Yep.
Kristy Kendrick?
Here.
And James DeVito is absent with notice. We have five.
All right. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Get a motion to approve the agenda.
Will move.
Second.
All right. Any additions, anything? We've got two items to postpone. The parks would like to postpone their comments about the plans and review until December 12th under the commission reports and under unfinished business they'd like to go ahead and postpone that. They haven't had a chance to get that Any other changes? If not, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any comments, changes, corrections, additions, deletions? If not, all those in favor of the minutes as submitted, signify by saying aye.
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 We have, under the CAPC, we've got a position that they're reviewing and it's going to come up for review in December, or in January rather. And under the hospital, we've got a vacancy that anybody who's interested, please submit an application in for that. And I think at this time too, Michael Mary is here to kind of talk about the 2016 and where we're going on 2017. If you'd like to come up here to the front, please sir.
I have recently acquired the audit for 2015. For a number of years now, Wendell and Associates have done our audits and they have always been very quick with them. For some reason, this year, they were really slow. Elsewise, this audit would have been available to you probably by March. I think that the next year's audit, after a conversation with the company, will probably be a lot more prompt. So, first off, let me take a minute. I'd like to go back to about 2006. I joined the commission, I think, the previous year. And at that time, the commission's predominant job was to run the hospital. We hired the administrators. We basically struggled to make the payroll when it wasn't available through income from the hospital. So the commission was about as poor as any other commission in this town. Well, the writing on the wall at the time was that small community facilities like ours were becoming so expensive to operate that the community itself was having and was going to continue to have quite a struggle to make this happen. The most reasonable approach to continue having a hospital was to go out and find a management company that would come in with enough money of their own that they could bring the equipment in to run a functioning hospital where we were struggling with equipment that we really couldn't afford. So, starting in '07, we went into business with Allegiance Healthcare and they took over operating the hospital as a business separate from the commission and the city. Now, a question had arisen in my last meeting regarding how much it costs to run our current facility. And the question was actually presented at the time to the CEO of Allegiance, of our hospital. And he politely explained that this was a private corporation making its own income and like any other corporation of its nature, they're simply, we're not going to turn that kind of information over to a requesting agency. So, to answer the question presented, how much does it cost to run this hospital today, is not really answerable inasmuch as the people that are doing so would prefer not to share the information. Now, I can tell you that Allegiance has just brought in a, what they call a 32-slice CT scanner. It's a state-of-the-art, I think the only company in Northwest Arkansas that can compare to anything like it is Manah in Fayetteville. Needless to say, well beyond the expense of the commission could ever afford. And operating the hospital with just that bill itself on a monthly basis is going to raise the numbers unbelievable. I was asked to present a guess and to be as broad as I can be, I believe that it would cost $150,000 to $250,000 a month to pay the bills that are required to keep that facility running in the standard it's currently operating with. That leads into my 2015 audit. And I've given a copy to Kim. She'll be distributing it to you. And you may have questions for me once you have a chance to see it, but I wanted to take a minute and go over just the real brief issues regarding our audit. It was a very, very simple audit this, in 2015. We started out the year with $1,962,114 and change. We had that spread around two different banks. Throughout the course of 2015, the two incomes that the commission has, and that being the license to run a critical care access hospital, which is leased by Allegiance, and our home health care side of the licensure, which is rented by a company in Louisiana. Louisiana Home Health Care, I believe is the name of it. But between the two of them and the interest payments that we had incurred throughout the previous year, we had an income for 2015 of $371,998 and change. Now, according to the audit that I'm just presenting, we have expenses of $53,196. $51,000 and change of that expense is depreciation that was extended from the property that we own and lease to Allegiance Healthcare. So, our real expenses beyond that $51,000 came in the form of a small amount of legal fees, our bonding fee, and our fee for filing the audit. We ended up, 2015, with, I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry. With $2,280,917 and change. That brings us up to January of 2016, which we have had a total of $318,902 in income between the two lease figures. And I think $1,970 in fees that were the fee for paying the audit fees and the legal fees from last year. And to date, we'll probably end this year, plus or minus some of the interest rate that we've worked with, with approximately $2,280,917. My treasurer, Bob Walling, and I have taken it upon ourselves, the very, very little bit that we can do with these funds actually amounts to considerable amount of money over time. We have recently put up for bids and selected Community First as the bid we accepted at 1.56 percent for a CD of $378,000. That's approximately the amount of money that we will have each year as income, so we're looking at perhaps finding the best bid within the city that we can each year and rolling these into five-year CDs. In another three and a half years, we will have new ones coming due every year. So, the difference in the 0.96 percent that we were going to get from one bank to the 1.56 percent from Community First over five years, actually calculated over $22,000. So, Bob and I have, within our limitations, have been working to try and increase the amount of money that we do have to work with in the future. Now, the question, of course, is what do we need the money for? And to answer that very succinctly, if for any reason, a management company like Allegiance were to say file for bankruptcy the next day, and, you know, we all know that we never know if that happens or not, suddenly they say, okay, well, we can't pay wages anymore after right now. And the only way to keep our hospital alive and active is to never allow the doors to be locked for one second. The minute that that happens, our license is out the door and we'll never have it again. We're grandfathered in currently because the Berryville Hospital was built, obviously, after ours, and it is so close to ours that if we ever allowed ours to close, we would never have the opportunity to open one up within the limitations that Berryville puts on us. So it's critical that we never allow that to take place. So the money that the commission manipulates right now is predominantly there to step in instantly and take over the operation of the hospital until we find a suitable new management company. And as it stands right now, we actually have probably, if my estimations are correct, less than a year's worth of income to do that with. I don't think it would take that long. I think we would find a suitable management company within a month or two, or even less. I have been told that city council has been approached, and I personally have been approached by other companies. I don't go out of my way to make these obvious predominantly because the current company we're with is doing an excellent job, is expanding, and giving us no reason to believe that they won't be there for us. So until the time we see otherwise, offers are nice to hear, but they need to be kept on the shelf until we need them. That's about where we stand today. I have changed our commission meeting dates from once a month to once every three months. And of course, the reason for that is that our job has become the manipulation and protection of monies in our care. We have no business running the hospital any longer. We're very lucky that the hospital is quite willing to come to our commission meetings and share information between us and the city council. They're extremely well-versed in communication with us. So I'm just very pleased. Question?
You know, you just said that you're very pleased. You do it every three-quarters because you shouldn't be in the business of running a hospital, but just a while ago, you said that you'd need to run the hospital and you'd need to use that money should Allegiance give their six-month notice and, you know, take off, which they only have to give six months and they can break the contract.
Exactly.
The city can't break the contract. It's a one-way, with Allegiance in the driver's seat as far as breaking the contract.
That's absolutely correct.
Which, by the way, the contract is still very questionable because it was never signed by the mayor, but that's another issue. That has nothing to do with it. And we already know that the hospital commission, that hospital wouldn't be there if it hadn't been for two things. One, it got critical care access, which gives it cost-plus.
Yes.
So they're not in competition with other hospitals that have to operate off prospective payment system by any means. And then the other one was, is because Allegiance is there. But the fact of the matter is, to disengage from Allegiance, when a lot of the primary functions of that hospital have been shipped down to Shreveport, Louisiana, because they've taken over a tremendous amount of the operational aspects of that hospital and they're running it from the mother corporation down there, which allows them to cost-shift Shreveport cost up here and put it on the cost report. The only reason that there's doctors in that hospital right now is because they could put it on the cost report and get reimbursed, which allowed the doctors here in town then to stay in their office and take care of their patients instead of running over and trying to be an emergency room physician on call and take care of their patients too. So what I'm trying to say by that is that the tie-in to Allegiance and what's happened with that hospital and the management and the employees, who are their employees for 10 years. They're on their wages, they're on their workman's comp, they're their employees. They're not the hospital's and/or the commission's employees.
Oh, absolutely. I agree.
They're absolutely not. So, I think the commission should take a serious look at the fact that I don't think that you, that there are the capabilities for the commission to step in should Allegiance walk out. You better have another plan that has been a city-approved for something, if something happens and Allegiance for any reason was to walk. I don't think they will because I think they're somehow pulling enough cost-shifting in that it's paying for itself for them and they're hanging in there, which I think is wonderful. But at some point, we're going to have to visit with the Arkansas Department of Health and come up with another alternative and look at something else, either urgent care clinic with some observation beds or something potentially in the future as an alternative. But just jumping in saying you're going to hold on to the hospital is very interesting.
If I can say so, if, should this issue ever arise, then it would be every bit as much the city council's decision, if not more so, than the commission's to choose a direction to move forward. Now, when I say step in and run the hospital, I don't truly mean to administer the hospital operations. No one in the commission has that kind of background and authority to begin with. But we would have the money to reach out and probably find a management group that would keep it together while we put together something that the city could approve of. And that's, again, what the money is there for, is to protect the hospital. And to be honest with you, because of the way that medicine is developing in the rural environment, I have a tendency to agree with you. I think that some other form ultimately is going to be Eureka Springs' option for modern medicine. It's going to be a triage center of some nature or other. Because any time that any of us need attention, we need a burn center, we need a heart center, we need a cancer center. What our triage center needs to do, or what our hospital predominantly needs to do, is to treat a minor broken arm, or a broken finger, or a headache, or a flu. And those are things that these kinds of community facilities are capable and able to do. And in truth, Allegiance is moving into areas that is allowing us to make the decision of doing some of the services that we've been going to Fayetteville for, or Rogers for ourselves, you know, the MRI and CT scans. They're bringing that equipment in that is compatible with and comparable to some of the other big companies' equipment. So it's giving us some advantages that we haven't had or wouldn't have should we have been in the business of running a hospital.
You need revenue. No money, no mission.
That's right. That's absolutely right. So, and, excuse me, sir.
Yeah, Michael, there's a couple of things I just wanted to ask. The structure maintenance, that is, it's like a triple-net lease? The, Allegiance takes care of all the maintenance on the structure?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't know. And then insurance? Does the city carry insurance on the structure?
No, the, the way the lease is written, the leaseor is required to pay all insurance fees, all maintenance fees, and maintain the facility to the standards.
So it's basically a triple-net?
They got it in.
Yes.
Okay. And then, and then the, excuse me, the lease, your base for the lease payments you receive, are they, are they flat rates for the two entities that are your tenants?
No, sir.
Are they based on revenue?
One of them is. With Allegiance, it's a flat rate of $15,000 a month. I can't quote the exact number. Originally, it was $3,800 and something. We had some difficulty with Allegiance in misunderstanding who kept the home health portion of the licensure. So in 2007, Allegiance kept a $160,000 check from the home health group claiming that they felt that was part of the licensure they were leasing. So we took them to a federal court. The commission went to Harrison to go through this process. The ultimate end of the situation was that the commission agreed on several things, one of which was that they could keep the $160,000 that the commission felt was inappropriately appropriated. And in exchange, the lease price would go up from that $3,800 to $15,000. We were quite aware as a commission that that would make up a larger distance or difference over time than just taking back the money. So we agreed to.
Now then, but, but then the other is the home health?
Yes, the other one is the Louisiana Home Health Care Group, and they pay us based on their revenue, yearly revenue. And what we have seen over the course of the last seven or eight years now is that we have seen a slight increase in the payments to us, implying that their revenue is improving each year as well. Ma'am?
The lease called for a half a million dollar penalty in the event that the Allegiant didn't buy or build a new hospital. Did they pay you that penalty?
No, ma'am, that was also part of the federal agreement with the courts and Allegiance, is that we walked away from the requirement to build a new hospital. A, we knew that holding on to that, we would never get it built anyway, that Allegiance wasn't going to put the money out for it, and we would never see the funds from Allegiance if we demanded the half a million dollars. So we agreed to write that out of the contract in order to make these other adjustments. And the $15,000 a month accounts for about $120,000 a year difference in what they were paying. So it's really making up the difference in that fund as well as the $160,000 that was inappropriately appropriated. As long as they finish out the 15, or the three auto renewals of their lease, which appears to be taking place.
And my other question is, you mentioned that those were the best interest rates that you could get within the city. Are you required by law to bank within the city, or is that just simply a preference of the commission?
Ma'am, I believe actually it's a preference of the commission, and we felt reflected the opinion of city council in the past, that all monies that were held for the city of Eureka Springs or the people of Eureka Springs be done so within organizations that kept their home base here as well. So that we've worked to try to accomplish that fact. With one exception, we did have a CD with the Walmart Bank.
Our best.
Our best. And because we got a better interest rate with Community First, we went ahead and moved our CD from that bank to Community First. Yes, sir.
Michael, the, so they're responsible for the plant, the structure and all, and is there anybody that monitors that to make sure that it's all up the snuff?
Yes, sir.
Is there inspection or something that annually or semiannually?
There is a state inspection done by OSHA and one other hospital approving organization. In addition to the fact that Allegiance has an inspection done annually, as I understood it, was turned over to the city council yearly. If, I believe that had just come up not too long ago.
And you also have the Arkansas Department of Health that does the annual inspections for care and also the physical plant. So, you have, you're going to have about three different agencies, and Allegiance could be a fourth one if they have an internal inspection, that are actually looking at the plant. But we all know it's just limping along, let's be honest.
It truly is. They're keeping it up to standards somehow, but it's probably an expensive process.
Mostly because it's grandfathered and then you can't, you can't bring it up to the newest standards. They have to accept the old ones as long as you keep it up.
That's absolutely right, sir. Upgrading our facility would be a tremendously difficult thing to do. Something I have mentioned to the CEO of recent, rather than considering building a new facility, rather expanding if they want to continue leasing, expanding the current facility and building where it stands while you keep the doors open. But then again, I don't think that's something that's going to be put on the table anytime Any other questions? If you come up with them, please don't hesitate to send them to me and the commission, and we'll be glad to look into anything that you have in mind.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I might stick around for a moment. We've got another item on the agenda, see?
Okay.
All right. And then the note on the other commission is, we still got a vacancy on cemetery commission also. I do have somebody who's interested, but I don't think they've put in an application yet, so. That brings us down to public comments. No public comments takes us to new business, which is discussion of the cost of running the hospital without the current contract.
Move to discuss.
Okay. Good second?
Second.
You want to continue on?
Well, I think that we've somewhat, I think your, the concern that you brought up is a very valid one, but I think it would be wise if the commission maybe did some preliminary investigations as to who they would have to contact if something were to happen and were necessary to keep the doors open at all, you know, continuously. I think it would be a really good idea to maybe have some irons in the fire just in case it had to blow out.
Well, I didn't mention a name earlier.
You might want to put your mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't mention it earlier. One of the companies that has approached me personally was Washington Regional, was a company that runs our current clinic. And I'm, I'm not sure the name of the company that has approached city council. Oh, is it? I think that there is probably a certain degree of preparation that the commission might be able to do in preliminary contact, under the assumption that the current company, for some reason, fails to follow through with upgrading there into the contract. And I will follow up on that and get back with you as soon as I've had it under commission.
And we're going into our third five-year term, starting January, I think, aren't we?
I believe that it is.
Somewhere in there, give it a turn.
June?
June?
We started it in '07, it went to '12. The second renewal then is in '17.
June of '17, so it's in five years.
And then goes through until '22.
Yeah. See, and the only reason, again, that Allegiance does such a good job with that is all the cost shifting and cost plus. So if, if anything happens at the federal level, and they start messing with Medicare, and there was a big discussion under Obama about taking away and also starting to limit some of that if you're less than 15 miles from another facility. And there was a whole, we don't want to get into right now, about how they, how that happened. And a lot of states ended up doing that. And, but they were looking, they said if they went back in and just took out the hospitals that were close to, within 15, they could save 300, 400 million, or it was tremendous number in healthcare. So if somebody comes back with that plan again, look out.
Exactly. I agree.
I, I'm also very, you know, concerned with the city in the financial position that it's in, about the fact that the hospital commission is sitting on close to $3 million. And I would obviously like to look at how that money could help the, the city in its current financial state. And I would like to think that the hospital commission could be doing more for, for the city to help it out in its situation. I don't believe, at least from what I gather, that you're going to need $3 million to continue the operation, particularly if it phases into a smaller sort of critical care operation.
I, I've spoken to city council on a number of occasions on this particular issue, and I certainly don't mind reiterating on occasion as new members come in. The issue with this is that the commission is extremely limited to how it can manipulate those funds. The state attorney general's office has determined what a commission can and can't do in this regards, and it's extremely limited. The commissioners are actually in the position of going to prison if they mishandled those funds in the wrong way. So I would say that there might possibly exist a means for the city to utilize those funds, but they would have to go to the state attorney general's office and get some changes made in the way this was written, before anything could be done legally. And I suspect that would take a very long time. But it would be something that I couldn't make the decision without threat of jail. And I don't think anybody that you replaced me with would be wanting to take that risk either.
I would never suggest that we misuse funds illegally.
And when I say misuse, I don't mean just abuse, but actually if I were to move funds...
No, 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 I mean, I'm a lawyer, so I, I'm not suggesting, I, I definitely believe that we should use them in a legal manner.
It, it has always been led us to believe that, well, our attorneys in particular tell us how careful we have to be how this money is spent. We were able to buy an ambulance some time ago, and that was done predominantly by donating the ambulance to the people of Eureka Springs, because the city operated an ambulance service, and they were willing to go in the contract with that ambulance and operate it for the people of the city. I could not in any way give that ambulance to that portion of the city with it being illegal. These monies technically belong to the individual people of Eureka Springs to be used in healthcare issues. So we kind of snuck in under the wire in that regard towards the ambulance, and we were strongly advised not to do so again.
Well, I'm just letting you know that I'm going to explore any way that those monies could be used to the...
I highly recommend it. I, I would like to see how far that you're able to get in that regards, because it is a large amount of money, and the city is short. But unfortunately, the commission isn't in any position to be able to make those decisions. So if you come up with something that would suffice for the attorney general's office, that would be awesome.
Well, thank you for your service on the commission, and please thank the other commissioners.
Thank you very much, ma'am, I appreciate that.
Anybody else? All right, we'll go on to our next order of business, is ordinance to reclaim.
No, if you want to.
Unopened alleyways in Dairy Hollow. Get a motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
All right. We have an ordinance in front of us, allowing the city council to reclaim the jurisdiction over the property in Dairy Hollow, so we can then go ahead and, and continue on for the vacation process. Yes, sir?
Make a motion, we assign this ordinance a number and read it on its first reading.
Second. All right, got any?
I would like to discuss just for a second. Well, I haven't had a chance to. Okay. Has she made an application for the vacation as yet? Does she have the signatures of all the adjoining owners?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It wouldn't be at the table if all the preliminaries hadn't been covered.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of issuing the number and reading it on first reading, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
The ordinance number will be 2250, and ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property located in Dairy Hollow. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has been petitioned to vacate and/or exchange certain land now held as a green zone by the Parks and Recreation Commission. And whereas Section 12.08.01E of the Eureka Springs Municipal Code allows the city council to reclaim jurisdiction over the following sections of green zone, to make further discussions of the petition. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, that the unnamed approximately 10-foot wide strip of property running northeast from Dairy Hollow Road between lots 4, 5, and 6 of Block 79, and lots 1 and 2 of said Block 79, surveyed and plotted by Eureka Springs Improvement Company. And an unnamed strip of land varying from approximately 30 to 60 feet wide, running southwest from Dairy Hollow Road between Block 71 and Block 79, surveyed and plotted by Eureka, Eureka Improvement Company, is hereby removed from the jurisdiction of the Parks and Recreation Commission for further reconsideration by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 2, the provisions of this ordinance are hereby declared to be separable, and if any provision shall for any reason be held illegal or invalid, such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this ordinance. Section 3, all ordinances and solutions and parts thereof in conflict herewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Mr. McClan?
I can make a motion that we approve ordinance 2250 on its first reading.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Mr. McClan?
I would like to go ahead and, and, while we're to, I make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2250 by title only for its second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClan?
Yes.
Act 0? Ordinance number 2250, an ordinance authorizing the city council pursuant to the Eureka Springs Municipal Code to reclaim jurisdiction over certain property located in Dairy Hollow.
Mr. McClan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2250 on its second reading.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five a saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. All right. Go on to our third item, discussion of the tax situation.
Motion to discuss.
Second?
We have kind of briefly talked a little bit about this under our budget review. You know, the issues come up where why, and, you know, what happened, and why this failed, and what, what are we going to do now? One of the suggestions that, that we're coming up with, that we're going to have to do, and that's one of the comments that I'd heard, was go ahead and having our finance director prepare a report on what we need to do, what the rates are going to be raised to, to meet our obligation of the bond issued, the 120%. And see the various methods of that, whether, how it's going to affect the water and, or the sewer, and what proportions, and to come back to the city council with those numbers. By doing that, I think, and the council knows, and we talked about, all we're really doing is, is bringing the water and sewer rates up to meet our obligations for the bond issue. That doesn't mean we're going to have that much more money to go back in to improve our infrastructure. I talked about our maintenance building that's been, we've been messing around with it for three years, and the price keeps going up. It's taken, trying to figure out a way, and then using the money to go ahead and use and build a testing lab down at our sewer plant, and also doing something for chemical storage. Taking money that we can know that we can start making a return on our investment. Right now, as bad as we need the maintenance building, and those four people up there working on maintenance are working out in a cold and in terrible conditions, it doesn't show a return on any investment. And I think our biggest problem with our budget, because as we noted in our budget deal, we're still running a flat budget. And so we need to fix our infrastructure, and that was the whole purpose of the tax. Doesn't mean that we may decide with council approval and thoughts, that we may want to go back and look at having the tax come back up on strictly the water and sewer, and taking the auditorium out of the, the equation. And what percentage, if we just want to do a 75%, three quarters of a cent tax, or if we want to do 5/8 of a cent tax, keeping it under 10%? I mean, those are items that I think the council needs to think about and talk about. But I'm going to open that up to comments and questions that y'all are thinking about. Mr. McClan?
Is, and this, I suppose I direct this to Lonnie. The, that 120% of bond requirement, is that, is that net revenue in those departments?
Yes, it is.
So if, if we had, well, we, we have a lot of sewer line, or water line breakages. And so, you know, all those expenses, wages, everything that comes out of the water and sewer, that's all apart. So it's, it's just a regular P and L is what they would go off of.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, so that's, there's, that, that can change from year to year, as far as what that would be, based on problems that we could have with our infrastructure.
Absolutely. And of course, another factor in that is if there's a method that we could use to isolate some of the leakage in the infrastructure, where we wouldn't be buying so much more water than we're able to bill for, that would reduce our cost of it sold. So consequently, that would reflect on the bottom line.
Sure.
Well, that brings up that Duane had wanted to water meter, a tester that was supposed to go and look through the lines. It was for $10,000 or something. And we've never bought it, and I don't see that on our capital. But he had, he had identified a piece of equipment that in the years past, that would have helped with isolating leaks and some issues, and anyway, we...
That testing on the water?
No, it was, it was something.
Camera.
It was a, it was the camera. And he wanted, it was four or 5,000, and it's, I didn't see it back on this list, so. Anyway, that just brought my, brought that up.
Some kind of sewer though, wasn't it?
I think it's some kind of kit that, that caused Robert to shrink, and he would swim through there. He had to shrink a lot.
If it's the one I'm thinking of, we had talked, we had talked about sharing a camera with Holiday Island.
I think that's wastewater. I don't think that's water lines.
Okay.
I think, but Lonnie and I have, have...
There was one.
There's another issue too, that's out there that, and I don't think we've gotten any cost, that it's some sort, and this sounds really, you know, science fiction, sci-fi, but it's, it's a satellite mechanism that can come down and look at water lines, and actually, it looks at, I think, temperature of the ground, is what it does, and it can isolate water leaks, because your water's going to be colder than the surrounding ground, and it's within a few feet. I don't know how many feet, 20 to 30 feet, I think, is what, I think is what it was. And we're looking and seeing what that kind of cost that's going to be. Because we know we got some water leaks down there. We've got a large water leak somewhere between, you know, on South Main down to the water plant. And that's, that's a huge leak that we are ending up paying for. So if we can break those down and fix those, then we can end up saving more money. And again, it costs money to fix them. And you can see, we don't have a lot of money going in right now, so anything we can save, we can, would help us, for sure. And when by raising the water rates and sewer rates to meet our bond obligations, we'll be able to have extra money to be able to go back in and make some repairs to our infrastructure. Not like we need, and we won't be able to do new sewer lines like we should, because there are a lot of places that we know inside our city limits that aren't, do not have sewer. And we've been promised some places out there for over a long, long time, and it's a sore spot for a lot of people.
So we're going to, again, have this data as part of our budget process for 2017?
Yes.
Thank you.
And also, want y'all to think about it, and I'd love for the citizens out there to contact city council members, contact my office, contact city clerk, and let us know what your feelings are about a three quarter of a cent or 5/8 of a cent sales tax toward this, if we should do that, or if just keep raising our water rates and sewer rates. I mean, that's, that's the two choices we still have.
A tax dedicated to infrastructure, not, not to the auditorium.
Dedicated strictly to water and sewer.
Thank you.
And again, we would set up an account, a special account that would be audited, and be special for the water and sewer, so we'd be able to see where that's going. The council could, could monitor it on a monthly basis, the citizens could monitor it on there, so. Anyway, any other thoughts? All right. Next item is third quarter financial report. Next item is third quarter financial report.
Since we're at the third quarter, it's getting progressively bulkier, as required by state law, here's the summary on the bonds and long-term debts, the bank balances, receipts, the check register, and payroll through September 2016. And thank you again, for those who take the time to look at it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next item is get a motion to discuss resolution for our parking lot lease.
So moved.
Second.
Every year, we go in and we have a resolution that allows me to execute a parking lot lease with the county. We rent the county parking, we rent from the county the parking spaces around the courthouse, and basically, that's what this is, and as far as I know, I have not heard different from the county judge, will be keeping the same rates and everything that we've been paying last year. So, get a motion?
Moved to give it a number and read.
Read for approval?
Yep.
Get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
All right. Resolution number will be 698, oh, sorry, roll call. Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Uh huh.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Five zero. Okay, resolution 698, a resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a parking lot lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lots, by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas is the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is the lesssee. It resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement for the Carroll County Western District Courthouse parking lot, by and between the county of Carroll County, Arkansas is the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is the lesssee, whereby said city agrees to lease the following described property. The existing parking lots immediately surrounding and adjacent to the Carroll County Western District Courthouse, located at 44 South Main Street, Eureka Springs, Arkansas, such parking lots presently occupying the property directly northeast and south of said courthouse, and bounded by distinct barriers such as the auditorium, first street, and curbs, respectively, for a term of one year commencing on January 1, 2017, and ending at midnight on December 31, 2017.
Our next is resolution for city hall office lease. This is a lease that comes up in, for a three-year term, starting in January and ending in 2020, and again, as far as I know, will be operating on the same basis that we have.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Got any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I know we bring this up all the time, have we ever gotten any further in regards to the original agreement with the Eastern District in regards to we would never have to pay rent since we gave them the property?
I can bring that up.
I know we've been trying to research this, all we know is, I think it was in the 50s, one of our mayors told him, yeah, we'll go ahead and pay rent, and we, it was in writing, rent free, we gave them the property for this. And we don't know why, the notes, the minutes were not clear enough as to why he agreed to pay rent, and now we're stuck with it.
I could ask our local historian, Mr. Cross, but I bet he wouldn't be able to help us with any paperwork.
But it would be nice to get a final, solid research thing done on it, because we're not supposed to have to pay rent, or we could make them buy it. But I mean, but really, and it's never been clarified, they've never been able to figure out why one of our mayors said that we'd go ahead and pay rent.
I don't know.
David?
Make a motion that we assign this resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Five zero. The resolution number will be 699. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas is the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is the lesssee. It resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is hereby authorized to negotiate and execute a lease agreement by and between the county judge of Carroll County, Arkansas is the lessor, and the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas is the lesssee, whereby said city agrees to lease 2,062 square feet of floor space for office purposes on the lowest level of the Western District Carroll County Courthouse, located at 44 South Main Street in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for an initial term of up to three years commencing on January 1, 2017, and subject to a renewal annually no later than January 15 of that year, and thereafter, as the parties may agree.
I'll take care of that one. The date on workshops for talking about the vacating process on land vacating.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. Are we coming up with any comments? You want me to have Kim, or what's?
Well, one thing is, I think that the whole discussion could be bifurcated, in that I think we've got two different ordinances under consideration, and one hasn't even been passed out, I went ahead and made a copy of it, and this, this one had not been passed out the last time we discussed this, and I think it could be considered separately from the other ordinance and the procedures for vacation. And this is simply the one that replaces the green zone parks with the trails. In other words, it would make, it would give parks jurisdiction over the existing and proposed trails, rather than all of, all of the unopened streets. And it also provides that we don't have to go through the process of having an ordinance to remove it from parks jurisdiction, we can just go ahead and do whatever we want at any time without that ordinance. So I think, I don't know how much of a, whether we actually have to have a workshop about that, I think the workshop would be more appropriately, more appropriately used for discussing the procedures for a vacation.
Go ahead, Dave.
David?
You know, I don't know what it is about this, I am having a hard time tracking it in my mind.
Okay, and that's maybe why I'm trying to divide it up.
I'm just, I'm not tracking it, it's almost like I have to see a process with the beginning, and a middle, and an end, and the flow, and I'm seeing pieces, and I'm, I'm losing it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but I just, I am.
Okay.
For me, I would just, I don't really necessarily have any problem with this. Specifically, I need to kind of read through it a little more closely, but I would like to review the, the master plan, and, and look at it again, and see what, what we are covering, how extensive it is, and, and I like in here that you put in here that we, the city council may still vacate without going back, even something that is a trail, if, if it's necessary, if it's something we deem that, that so, but I think we need to look at that, and see where we stand with it.
Well, I will, I will say that the, the city council already approved the parks master plan. If we need to change it, I think that would be, may or may not be appropriate.
It's not that I think we need to change it, I just think we need, I'd like to look at it in conjunction with this, just to familiarize myself again.
What I'm hearing this ordinance does would be basically eliminating this ordinance that we're doing tonight.
Correct, it would replace it. It would take the place of that ordinance.
Well, it just, we would be not, we would not be doing this ordinance tonight, we would already have.
Right.
Right, right, that would not have to take place.
In other words, our ordinance tonight, instead of this, would be going ahead and vacating the case property. Is that the way I'm reading this?
Yes, yes, that's one, one of the reasons, the other one is to, instead of parks having jurisdiction over all of the unopened streets and alleys, it would have jurisdiction over the trails and the proposed trails. So if there's something in the bottom of a ravine that is never going to become a trail, that would be under the jurisdiction of the city.
Or an alley that runs in between two lots, in part of the trail. Okay, Mr. Weaver?
What you have here, though, isn't it also allowing the city council to vacate a trail without any input from the parks?
Except, and, and perhaps this is where it overlaps with the other ordinance, the procedures that I'm proposing for vacations would request the input of parks in a vacation, in, in a vacation.
Have you considered what that might do to their ability to find aid in building trails, such as the proposal that was for the center up here, where they were looking at getting grant money to build those trails, and where those trails had to stay in existence? Giving this power back to the city without giving them any ability to maintain trails might vacate their ability to be able to obtain grant funds in the future?
If they have an opportunity for a grant, the city council could always decide, I don't believe that Parks Commission actually owns any, any properties, the city does. So as far as dedicating any particular properties in a way that might make it easier for them to receive a grant, the city could, city council could always do that on a case-by-case basis.
They also have their own revenue stream that they may not wish to pour into trails anymore, if it's going to be subject to the city council selling it off from them immediately.
We need to have a workshop, that's what this is.
Well, we're talking about possibly another workshop on, on vacating.
That's what all this is.
Okay. Mr. McClung?
I think, let's see, what are we doing right here? Okay, yeah, I, I, I mean, I agree, I think we need to pull the master plan up, Parks master plan, and have, sit down on a workshop, and kind of look at it, and, but, I mean, I, I like this, I don't have any problems with it.
Then I would recommend two workshops, maybe one on this ordinance, and one on the other ordinance that we already looked at, and procedures.
I don't know what you mean, what the, what other ordinance?
A week, a week or so, I mean, the last meeting, we brought, there was another ordinance that talked about.
Not anything we took action on?
No.
Yeah, sure.
That was when we decided a workshop.
I think we can do them both at the same time, can't we?
We can, or we could, well.
Yeah, I think that would be.
And we do need to have parks there, I probably can.
I just need to see the process, if we're going to do this here, we're going to take this away, and this is the flow, because when I remember the master plan, I remember parks coming up with, if you wanted, you know, I mean, there was some proposed trails that were very much encringed on citizens' property in this town.
Yeah, yes.
And, and it was fraught with a lot of emotion, obviously, in several cases, and I, I would definitely want to be assured that people who may have bought property to the real estate never said, by the way, you have a trail within 20 feet of the front, your front door, you know, coming through, that, that those people have, are handled carefully and fairly, and, and, you know, it, the master plan that parks had was you had to go to a trails committee, then you had to go to parks, and then it was, it was built up, and, and pretty intense, and we definitely need to look at all that, so it's very careful.
All right, we'll go ahead and set up a workshop on that. But just in a side note, David, it's ironic, the people over in Bentonville who were all upset over the trails being in their backyard and everything, now they, those properties are the number one sellers, and the price of those properties have increased.
And we've known that for how many years here? That's what's brought up a whole lot of times.
Tremendously, instead of going down, prices have increased.
And, and, and it also, the city council did approve that master plan.
Sure, yeah. I voted no, though, I'm on the record. Just wanted.
Whatever.
All right. Our next item is waiving biddings for plant equipment on the sewer treatment plant.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I can't find my agenda there, but anyway, we received, I was, I don't remember, was it, it was last spring, I don't remember the exact date until there, but it was one of our big floods that we had. We have discovered that if we don't contact FEMA immediately after an incident, they won't let us go back and apply for any FEMA monies. And so we went in and had, went around all the city, and we even applied on the auditorium for, for maintenance and for storm damage on it, which they disallowed, can't imagine why, but they did, but they did allow us, they gave us $173,000 in disaster funds, and $78,000 was specified for the wastewater purpose, and in particular, was $77,000, which is what we've gotten the cost for, with the screen works, headworks in front of the sewer plant that screens out a lot of gravel, big rocks, and things like that, that was damaged during this big flood that came through, where we, Leatherwood Creek came up, and, you know, we had all kinds of issues. So we have gotten one price, and this is pretty much a, and I think Dwayne gave you a memo that should be in part of your, no, okay, well, part of this is a, from Lakeside Headworks, and they were giving us a quote for this, and they are one of the few people, if not the only person, actually.
That's the only.
That can replace and use this screen, so that's one of the reasons we're asking for waiving the bids.
I'd like to make a motion that we assign this ordinance a number, and read it, please.
Second.
Second.
How did he do?
Any other comments, questions? Yes, sir.
One, two, three, four, five, the fifth paragraph, I just want to, you know, it does say there that this equipment is not available from any other equipment source, is that?
That's true.
Okay, you just said there were several.
Well, I'm sorry, I misspoke, it's not available from other sources.
Okay.
That's read, we're waiving the bids.
That's it again, too.
So, all right, all those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
The ordinance number will be 2251, an ordinance to authorize waiver of competitive bidding for certain treatment plant equipment replacement, and to authorize the mayor and public works department to make said purchase. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, having been informed of the needs of the public works department regarding the purchase of a fine screen assembly, which is a portion of the complete Lakeside Headworks unit for the wastewater treatment plant, and whereas the replacement of this equipment falls under DR 4254, the disaster that was declared in February 2016, and whereas the city of Eureka Springs was awarded $173,978.74 in disaster funds with $78,543.54 specified for wastewater purposes, and whereas the public works department has a guaranteed replacement cost of $77,760 from Lakeside Equipment Corporation, Bartlett, Illinois, for the equipment, which is not available from any other equipment source. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, section one, the requirement for competitive bidding and the acquisition of the fine screen assembly with guaranteed replacement costs shall hereby be waived to allow the purchase after finding it cannot be reasonably obtained elsewhere. Section two, the city council of the city of Eureka Springs does waive any bidding requirements and authorizes the mayor and public works department to purchase the fine screen assembly from Lakeside Equipment Corporation, Bartlett, Illinois, in the amount of $77,760. Section three, all ordinances and resolutions and parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. In the event any one or more of the provisions contained in this ordinance shall for any reason be held by a court of competent jurisdiction to be invalid, illegal, or unenforceable in any respect. Such invalidity, illegality, or unenforceability shall not affect remaining provisions of this ordinance, and this ordinance shall be construed as if such invalid, illegal, or unenforceable provision or provisions had never been contained herein.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2251 on its first reading.
Second.
I do have one question.
Okay.
Does that price, does that include delivery and installation?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a question. I just, I could be reading it wrong. It says the requirements in the acquisition, so we do not have that screen right now. We're acquiring it.
Correct.
Then it says guaranteed replacement costs. How much, that's an additional cost atop $77,000, which is not in here, we don't know. It says guaranteed replacement costs, but it doesn't say what those costs are. So obviously, this has continuing costs by putting this in. Should it?
Guaranteed replacement cost of?
No. Yeah. I'm just saying, if the original unit that we're buying is $77,760, then there must be some additional cost at some point if you have to have replacement, and it's been guaranteed, it's a guaranteed replacement cost, so there must be more cost that could occur.
No, I think the way this is reading, I think I see what you're saying. This is replacing once the damaged screen that's there. This is the replacement.
Oh, so the fine, for the fine screen assembly, we've always had one.
We've always had one, and it was damaged in the flood.
Okay.
And so this is the replacement.
I thought we didn't have one in the first place. We were buying that, and then I got it. Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other, do we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second. Okay, no?
Yes, we're good to go.
Okay, so all favor, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2251 for its second reading.
By title only?
By title only.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? Okay.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five zero. Ordinance number 2251, an ordinance to authorize waiver of competitive bidding for certain treatment plant equipment replacement, and to authorize the mayor and public works department to make said purchase.
Okay, Mr. McClung?
I'd make a motion that we pass ordinance 2251 on the second reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Mr. McClung?
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2251 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Five zero.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we...
One moment, though.
Oh, I'm sorry, you hadn't read it yet.
Ordinance number 2251, an ordinance to authorize waiver of competitive bidding for certain treatment plant equipment replacement, and to authorize the mayor and public works department to make said purchase.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2251 on its third reading.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor, sing five by rail call?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Five zero.
Okay, Mr. McClung?
As, let's see, we need to prove it now, right? Or did, yeah, or did we just do that?
We just did. That is what we just did.
Okay, then I have, I'd like to make a motion that, because Thomas have the essence to say that we invoked emergency clause, ordinance 2251.
Second.
Okay, any comments?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Five zero. Emergency clause, section, "For the city council upon the recommendation of the public works department of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, finds that because of the immediate need for the fine screen assembly, it is in the best interest for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens of Eureka Springs to purchase for the city as soon as possible, and an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and therefore this ordinance shall go into full force and effect immediately upon passage."
Thank you all. All right, our next item is an ordinance number 2249, food trucks for its second reading.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Ms. Snyder?
Has anything been looked into to avoid lawsuits and problems?
Mr. Weaver seems to think that we're okay.
That's one opinion. Have you thoroughly researched the local situation?
Is that a question to Mr. Weaver?
As in, as many restaurants as we have land use regardless?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
In regards to the 100-foot rule, or whatever it was that they had. True, it's a new land use, but considering the amount of restaurants we have, do you honestly think that a judge will sit there and say, well, restaurants can be two inches apart? Food trucks, which is a mobile restaurant, nope, they gotta be a football apart?
I think that as would the ordinance would withstand judicial review, yes.
Okay.
It is always, with any new ordinance, the possibility that someone will make a challenge to it. I don't think that challenge would necessarily be successful, as I said before, because it is a new land use, and cities have a right to regulate new land uses within their zones.
Okay, so it's new land use by having a restaurant on wheels, it's not new land use in regards to selling food?
Obviously, it is a new use, or we wouldn't have to pass an ordinance allowing it. Every food truck that wanted to could simply move into the area and be operational if we did not consider it a different type of use. We consider it a different type of use, that's why we're regulating where they can be.
And you honestly don't think that they aren't going to sit there and say, that's fine and dandy, but you are showing preference. You're showing bias.
If you look at it that way, then the whole regulation would be suspect to the same allegation, because I might want to put a food truck in my front yard, and I can't do that under this ordinance.
Oh, okay, I thought you were going to continue on it.
If I want to, I want to put one there, this ordinance prevents it. So the same attack would be there for that purpose. I could attack it based on the fact that you're discriminating against the population of Dairy Hollow that we want our own food truck, and you did not put it in one of your maps.
Well, and considering that it all started with wanting to do it very, very small and tiny to start, and became this massive hoopoff, what are the possibilities of repercussion? Being Eureka, I'm not talking about civilized areas.[1271.33][1271.33](laughing).
Given the fact that Eureka does have a higher predilection to lawsuits, I'm not telling you that it won't draw a lawsuit. I'm telling you, I believe that it would just withstand judicial review.
After how many dollars are spent?
I'm making, okay.
Okay, so points, points made.
Points made. David?
Make a motion that we read ordinance number 2249 by title only for its second reading.
I'll second that.
So you're suspending the rules?
Yes.
Suspend the rules, yeah, throw that in.
That goes without saying.[1313.53][1313.53](laughing).
Apparently, at this table.
That's automatic.
Any further discussion? From any members of the council? All right, all those in favor, sing, oh, no, rail call?
Suspending the rules.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Four, one. Ordinance number 2249, an ordinance regulating food trucks and trailers and amending chapter four, business licenses, licenses and regulations of the municipal code of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2249 on its second reading.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anybody else have any comments? Okay, now then, all those in favor, sing five by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
I have four, one. Mick Snyder refused. Okay.
I won't be part of the lawsuit, guys.
Thank you. All right, that comes us down to agenda sitting. Anyone? Mr. McClung?
I had a conversation with Joshua Bailey, and he would like to have the council listen to his pitch for adding another taxi company to the city.
Okay, so, all right, we just put him on the agenda for...
Next meeting.
Okay, you get a second?
Not for me.
Anyone?
Second.
All right. Mr. Thomas, put a second on it. Okay, so we'll put him on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes.
Does he need to have any documents and stuff like that?
Well, he, I've encouraged him to come in here and knock the council's socks off and thoroughly convince them that we have a desperate need for a third service in town.
Okay.
With all the bells and whistles.
Never mind, that's discussion, I'll say it the next time.
Okay, all right.
As far as, not agenda, but the next workshop on the 2017 budget, is that going to be?
Yeah, we'll get, Kim, we'll get everybody together with a workshop on that. Yeah. And I guess we are settled for only one meeting in December. Everybody understand that one?
And the date.
Do we need a sec, I mean, do we need a second?
No, only one meeting in December.
I'm not saying that we can't have a second if we feel that it's something we need.
I think the problem is, if we did, it'd be the date.
Twenty-eighth.
No way.
We can talk about it at our next meeting in December, where in between our workshops for...
And then we'll see, if there's a, if there's something pressing, then we can...
Well, we have two workshops probably in December, I would assume.
Well, I won't be here, and actually, City Hall's going to be closed on the 26th, but that doesn't mean we have time on the 26th.
We never have a second meeting in December. If there's an emergency, sure.
Yeah, well, we want, we want you all to earn your money.
That's right.
He doesn't get paid.
There have been special meetings.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, there's an emergency thing, yeah.
Okay, just throwing that out. Council comments? Ms. Kendrick, start over with you.
I don't have any comments.
Mr. McClung?
Gosh, I wish I had something really inspiring, but I don't.
I'll tell Robert.
Yeah.
David?
No, I think silence is good.
Tomorrow is Giving Tuesday, if everyone is not aware of that.
What?
Giving Tuesday. You're supposed to give to other people and organizations.
Oh, that's in my calendar.
Yeah, okay.
Pardon?
Right on my calendar.
Well, it should be. Mickey.
Happy Thanksgiving and Merry Christmas. I don't know. Yeah, that's it for me.
Is that it?
That was it for me.
Okay.
Not a good name.
I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and we, you know, well, we've got a lot to be grateful for. Town's looking good, looking pretty. The, if anybody hadn't seen the Basin Park lights, they did a great job this year, completely different than any time before, and it looks really good. I've heard a lot of, friends come in, neighbors from Portland, Oregon, for their, for a family wedding, and they were talking about how nice the, all the parks and the lights look. So, you know, we're being noticed, and people in town are walking around the streets, and I'm seeing bags in their hands, so I'm hoping the merchants are having a good season also. And speaking of which, I guess officially, on the Saturday, Friday?
Friday.
Friday, at 6:00 PM, the 2nd of December, we are going to have our Christmas parade coming down through downtown Spring Street. So our annual Christmas parade will be coming up, 6:00 PM. Somebody asked me that the other day, so if you're watching, it's 6:00 PM. Also, on that same day, will be the opening of the Smoke, the Snow Village and Train at a Gaskin Switch that Larry and Kathy Hanley are doing, and it's a fundraiser for the historical museum. Tickets are $5. And on the 3rd is the annual preservation society tour of homes, and tickets are available at the Chamber of Commerce or at the historical museum. And they've got some great homes on there this year, and some have never been on before. So be sure, if you get a chance, go by and see those. Also, that evening at 6:00 PM will be the Christmas tree lighting ceremony up at the Crescent Hotel. And also, at 7:00 PM that same day, on 3rd, John Two Hawks is going to have his holiday concert at the auditorium, and tickets are going to be $15. And John always does a great Emmy award-winning musician that does a great show down there. And then on the 10th, the Living Windows from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Downtown Merchants. And on the 10th also will be Light the Hills Luminaries, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Basin Park. And then on the 10th will be the Ozark Corral Concert.
Hey, I've heard about that.
Really good.
I just heard it.
Yeah, I have too. It's amazing.
I've heard all the way from Clifton over to Berryville, that they're just outstanding.
Oh.
So...
They're outstanding.
And that's going to be at 7:30 PM, and once again, on December 10th, at the auditorium, and tickets are only $10. and tickets are only $10. So expect a full house for that wonderful concert.
That'd be great.
And that's all I have. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.